Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending the special meeting of the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. AGP, are we ready to go with?
Yeah.
Thank you. The purpose of the meeting today, whoop, sorry, got ahead of myself. Will a clerk call the roll for the quorum?
Chair Peck?
Yes.
Vice Chair Woody?
Yes.
Member Love? Here, Member Johnson. Here, Member Dorfman.
There we go. Chair.
Quorum is established.
Thank you. The purpose of the meeting today is to complete the review and recommendations for initiatives to enhance city revenues. The matter was started early last year when the CFAC had a joint meeting with the city council. At that time, the city council established this as a special work item for the CFAC. Late last year, work program was adopted, and since that time, Members Dorfman and Johnson have been working to prepare a report on this matter. The CFAC has heard interim reports over the last six months and conducted a brief discussion on the matter last month, but took no formal action. The purpose of today's special meeting is to finalize our recommendations and move the matter on to the city council for its review and action. There are six groups of recommendations before us today. Increase day visitors through the focused marketing to Cal Poly students. Aid parking, sale or lease, and targeted development of city-owned properties. Modification lowering of the city's reserve amounts. Establishment of a EIFD or CFD. And other initiatives, including increasing local athletic tournaments, increasing gas station revenue, and taking a holistic look at facility pricing for events. I propose that we deal with each one of those items individually, discuss any revisions each, and then move on to the next. At the end, we'll entertain a global motion that includes all the modifications and revisions desired. Finally, there is a transmittal memo that has been prepared and drafted by me. That memo will be modified to reflect the CFAC's action today, but it also requires review and approval by CFAC. We'll start with public comment on the agenda item. Does anybody in the audience want to make comments related to the special agenda item?
Hello, members of the CFAC. My name is Lee Johnson. I live in Morro Bay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today and for your services to our city. I have submitted my comments as part of the agenda correspondence for this meeting. I'd like to highlight some of my thoughts here for you now. As a resident of Morro Bay and former economic development professional, I have watched with concern over the last 10 to 12 years as we've gone from a city that knew it had financial and other issues and had developed a long-term plan to address those challenges to a city that has no plan and is, in fact, actively working to make the challenges we face even harder. In general, I think the tactical recommendations that you've outlined are fine as far as they go. We can debate the numbers or discuss the details, but at the end of the day, the tactics are fine. It is the strategic leadership at the council level that is the issue with any plan to address our revenue challenges. Since the current city leadership is unwilling to tell us the citizens the truth about the need for economic development and revenue growth, we will continue to have a process that can be manipulated by a vocal minority. If we continue down this path, we'll have no choice but to cut critical and popular services like fire, police, harbor, recreation, streets maintenance, and more until there is nothing left to cut and we eventually go back to the county. The equation is simple. Increasing costs, decreasing revenue equal bankrupt. The only variable is time. At the basic level, for a city to be successful, it needs to be a place where people want to live, work, and visit. The city must also continue to change, grow, and adapt. Right now, our city is not a place like that. People watch our city council meetings, are engaged in the broader Central Coast community, or, God forbid, present a new idea or a new project to the city council. What they see is a community that's anti-science, anti-fact, intolerant, rude, abusive, close-minded, unreliable, and worst of all, untrustworthy. Inane sayings about a culture of yes and an email signature just make us look even worse. Actions speak louder than words, and our city's actions show people that our leaders are not building a place where you want to live, work, or visit, let alone adapt and grow. Unless we address this issue, the rest of the work on our challenges will be ineffective at best and counterproductive at worst. My contact information is available in my email if you have any questions. Thanks again for your time and for your service.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi there. Courtney Schepler, resident of Morro Bay and former member of your committee. Thank you all for the work that you do. Can you hear me okay? That's better, huh? Just a few inches shorter. I spent a lot of time going through the materials that you've had from your meeting last month as well as the recommendations presented today. Thank you for the work on those recommendations. I think those are very important to identify these opportunities for the city. As I went back and looked at past budgets, started in 2023, '24, '24, '25, and then this year, one of the things that I see happening is that, to make the math work in the out-years, we're getting more and more austere in our planning. If I look out at fiscal year '28, '29, '30, we're assuming an increase of only about 1% or 2% a year in our personnel costs. That's really not going to be adequate. We know that unless there's a lot of cuts. And I don't think the citizens are ready to hear about a lot of cuts in city services and personnel that provide those valuable services. Also, you've got to keep pace with what's happening in the market around you. I looked at the City of Slow budget, and their budget is increasing 6% on personnel costs over that same period. So are we going to be in a position where we're going to allow Morro Bay to fall behind the other cities around us? And then, in what case, you know, what kinds of employees are you attracting? Are you going to be a best place to work? Are you even going to be a desired place to work? Or do you get what's left over for everybody that can't get a job in a higher-paying locale? So I think the quality of our staff is important, and for that, obviously, we have to have competitive pay and benefits. So I think we've already got austerity in this budget as it's proposed, as you look to those out-years. In addition, I feel like the city is immature in its capital planning processes. When I look back at the prior years and you look towards what was projected for this year and beyond, a lot of times, those amounts are increasing because people didn't see what was coming three years or five years later. And just in the last couple of months at city council meetings, we've seen a lot of proposals for new expenses that aren't anywhere in any of these long-term plans yet. So, you know, that's a concern that we're, you know, committing to in these meetings. Things like a new fire station, which may be entirely worthy and entirely the right thing to do, but we haven't planned for it from a financial standpoint. We're committing to perhaps the purchase of Morro Bay Elementary with no plan for how you generate revenue or turn that into a responsible fiscal opportunity. And my concern is with the recommendations when we recommend pulling back on the amount contributed to reserve. If we knew that our reserves were well-forecasted and well-planned for and that we really had everything in there that we needed, great. But I think we're going to need a higher level of reserve to meet some of these promises that are being made to the community at this time that haven't been planned for. May I go? May I extend, or am I done?
No, done.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Jeff Heller of Morro Bay. First of all, I want to apologize for the text that I sent, Agenda Correspondence. I was working late last night on it, and I realized, looking at it this morning, that the last sentence just kind of stops and goes nowhere. And the things I wanted to put in there, I omitted, so you could pretty much ignore most of what's in that Agenda Correspondence. But I did want to come today to thank you all for your work on this. You know, talking about revenues is the most important thing the city can do at this point. I'm going to quickly cover a couple of things. One is, I think we need to keep our reserves where they are until we generate revenues that exceed our expenses. The only exception to that case might be something that's extremely critical or if we're using it to buy land that will generate income. Now, my favorite piece of property that I would love Morro Bay to own is the sewer plant property, which we jointly own with Cayucus. Lots of ideas how to use that property for years. I think the best use to generate revenue quickly is to own it outright, no partnership, and pave it and make an RV park, put it right there. It has a very low cost of infrastructure. It'll immediately generate substantial revenue for the city, and to me, that's the best bang for our buck. I don't know how that'll impact the reserves. I don't know what the price is that's being negotiated. I don't care. I think we need to buy it. That's number one. Number two, I've forgotten, but it'll come to me. No, number two actually was the reserves. Obviously, we would love to reduce that and spend it on different things, but if we just spent it on capital projects that don't generate substantial revenue, that, I think, is not a good decision to make. I want to applaud Emily and your crew for the 7% decrease in expenditures last year. I was looking at the operational budget, and I'm very impressed by it. And the presentation is excellent, and it's comprehensible and digestible, and I really appreciate the movement in that direction. That's pretty much what I wanted to say. I'd love to see us focus on that. The other thing we always talk about is affordable housing. I hope we don't sell any of our real estate. I think we should use our real estate, package our parcels, and build affordable housing on it. The teen center, for example, look at that proximity to the high school. Wouldn't that be a great location for teachers to live in affordable housing? I think it would be. So I think with our expertise of Councilmember Eccles and other nonprofits, Slow Self-Help Housing, who suggested that idea when I was on council and said, yes, you could package a number of small parcels into one package and get the tax benefits and so forth and get investors. So I say, let's do that. Let's talk to the people who want to build units, period, rental units on their property. Sinclair Gas and Kim McMillan at Distacios. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sean Green, Morro Bay. Thank you very much to CFAC and your work on revenue brainstorming. I'm a member of the Harvard Advisor Board. I speak only for myself here. I know that we're sort of nickel-and-diming our way to revenue ideas in the hundreds of dollars, so it's nice to see some big-picture thinking here. I do want to sort of add to a comment that I heard over here, which I appreciated. The, I don't know, general lack of financial forecasting, but that it still continues to improve over the years. The Harbor Enterprise Fund is about a $2 million fund, and every time we're talking about it, it is so frustrating, the fact that we don't even see any actual numbers until year end, in part because of the way the waterfront leases are written. And our waterfront leaseholders know the information that they have on lease-specific data and, in some cases, are very forward with sharing it, which is great for forecasting purposes. But for a city that wins financial planning awards, to not be able to forecast on a quarterly basis or, in a perfect scenario, a monthly basis is pretty frustrating, and hopefully it can change, even if it's on a voluntary basis that is incentivized in some way. To me, a tenant in good standing is one that would be forward with that information on a monthly or quarterly basis, even if the lease does not stipulate accordingly. The other thing I wanted to mention is regarding city-controlled pieces of property. I saw on the agenda that there was a focus on non-waterfront properties, and I just want to bring it back to the Tidlins Trust properties, which I know a couple of people on this board really thoughtfully investigated, and I appreciate that as well. It's a complicated system down there on the waterfront in terms of the leases. But we had an opportunity, I don't like to look backwards, I like to look forward, but we had an opportunity that was touted by our former harbor director, our former planning director, and former council members back in 2018, where we had a number of key lease sites coming up that were expirations of the Pipkin Lease System. And we kind of blew it on all but one of those properties that was eventually redeveloped over an eight-year period. Now, again, we can't go back in time, but we can maximize the opportunities, sites that continue to exist up and down the waterfront. Paul Gillan's project can be fast-tracked in whatever way possible. Certainly, we have to work with Coastal Commission on that. Gray's Inn, that site expired in 2018. We're now seven years removed from that. We are seven years removed from the Pipkin Lease expiration at libertine, and yet it hasn't been demolished. Giovanni's property has a number of extended lease sites that are up for debate, and 2028 is our next series of lease expirations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? AGP, is there anybody in the queue?
Hi, Chair. We have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda item. Thank you both for your work on this, Brian and Jean. Let's start with the report on the directed marketing to the Cal Poly students. We'll have discussion on that and identify any revisions that might be necessary.
Let's see. So on the marketing to the Cal Poly students, a few things came to light. The biggest surprise was the information that we received on the fee for events. That came out of a conversation while we were talking about the branding and marketing for events. And one of the key events, the World Surf League, the WSL, is hesitating whether they want to still be involved with their events in the city based on the fees. So while we're talking about these ideas, that piece is not in the marketing branding, wasn't in there. But that's come to light, and we're really talking about how we want to keep all our events here. So anything that can be done to keep these important relationships with these events. The free marketing alone for being in the World Surfing League event, there's a number on it somewhere, but for every time they have an event, they list all the beaches they go to. And having Morro Bay be part of that list, it's a big deal, and they're also exactly our demographic. So before we even wanted to start, I just wanted to throw that out there. That was something that, fortunately, because we've had so much support in having meetings out in the community, that was something that came to light. The other thing that came to light is this idea, which has been talked about, so I'm not going to beat it over the head, which is, how do we have a focused message in our branding and marketing that's consistent with Morro Bay as a city? A lot of cities have something that umbrellas at. I'm not sure how Morro Bay has that. So those were the two that kind of came out of that. And then I think the Cal Poly and increasing them here, I think it speaks for themselves. So I really don't have much more to say unless there's a question.
Why don't we start with committee questions?
Sorry, just for clarification, is this like questions related to the Cal Poly? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess if you could just refresh my memory. I know we kind of went over the report in detail last time. I know that you all have spoken with folks from WOW, the orientation, kind of like staff at Cal Poly. Is that right?
We haven't spoken with them directly. We just are aware of what they do. Also, there is an existing business that's already established a relationship with WOW Week, the sauna, the part-time sauna company. And they already are going to be hosting 200 people. But the potential is there because they do a ton of beachside events, and their planning is right now. So I think that's, if this were to be one of the items that we agreed was worthwhile to pursue, that one would need to be executed fairly quickly to potentially see additional revenue. So, but I will... Yeah, because I'll just go through the individual sort of subparts of the strategy to attract the younger... It's Cal Poly-centric, but I would call it just younger demographic in general. So WOW Week being kind of critical to imprint Morro Bay as a destination as being only 20 minutes away from this very large, relatively affluent demographic to get them coming here. Because they go to all kinds of places, you know, Avala, Pismo, Baywood, High Street Cafe. So this could easily be one of those if it just had the right set of attractions. And then a little to just enhance that, to do specific outreach to some of the high-profile students, such as athletes and others. And I mean, we could do that around the WOW Week or independent of that. And then another thing is to get the Cal Poly has the senior year project, which is very much hands-on, kind of semi-internship even. So to get specific topics that might be relevant to enhancing their demographics, like how to develop ecotourism or agritourism, and to talk to specific professors in, say, the business school or other relevant departments to get students. And then, of course, the city has to agree that this is something, or other organizations could be the Chamber or Visit Morro Bay, that having these kinds of intern projects and of your learn-by-doing projects would add value. But it's kind of just an interesting adjunct to regular paid consultants because they do have such a different perspective, being young and also being the demographic that we're kind of interested in. The other thing that I've talked about several times is to get a regional, relatively high-volume restaurant, which just, those bring people. I mean, I've commented several times how many people I saw at High Street Grill in Baywood, just dozens and dozens, you know, that just come for that specific restaurant. And many of these restaurants tend to have a few regional locations. They're just trying to identify who those might be and potential available properties, whether on the waterfront or on other available buildings, whether for sale or for lease. One that I have mentioned previously that has lost its lease has a national profile through the Diners Dives Program is the Spoon Trade, which, right now, they're a strip mall in Grover Beach. They could benefit from a more scenic location. And then the other one is to have, and this might be more controversial, but to look at the possibility of having food trucks and/or music every so often, once a month or whatever, at the Rock. That's something that's been deployed elsewhere and has got, you know, can get really good volume if that's something that people want to see here.
Thank you.
Those are the five subcomponents.
Other questions, Chair?
I don't think any more questions, just like, thank you, Jean, for refreshing our memory. But yeah, I would totally agree with you. You know, if now is the time that, you know, the orientation agenda is being finalized for Cal Poly, like, that is a huge opportunity to have potentially thousands of new students being introduced to Morro Bay very quickly.
Exactly. It's 5,500.
Yeah, it's 5,500. So my mind immediately goes to implementation, right? Like, who from our side would be responsible for kind of getting the ball rolling with that? I know that Steve likes concrete next steps, so that's just kind of my thought there.
Michael? No, any comments on the proposal?
Yeah, just, okay, just real quick on this. Yeah, one of the things on here that I really like is the word outreach. And I know it's something that we've talked about quite a bit on here. And it's making sure that we are proactive. And I really like how, not only the work you did on this, but this comment that says outreach to regional restaurants, which gets into the whole discussion of, you know, making sure that we, as a community, we need to get out there and make this happen. You know, not just sit around and wait for somebody to pick up the phone. And so I really appreciate that comment on there. And knowing that it was brought up earlier, Mr. Green, I think it was, that brought this up, that we got a next round of leases coming up in 2028. Was that what that was down there in Barcadara? Knowing that we've got those coming up and reaching out to these restaurants and businesses, I think that's a good opportunity for making that work together. What exactly are you envisioning when you talk about fun vibes seen at Morro Rock, including monthly food truck meetups, beer and wine garden, music and entertainment?
Yeah, I think the idea is, how do we want to utilize the parking lot to get some upside?
Sure.
And certainly can handle that kind of a venue. So if I took the one piece of it, it'd be that idea of a beer garden, right? Alcohol sales, it brings in a lot of revenue, and you mark it off. Just that whole European feel. People come, they show up, they get food, this and that. And whether we want to see that happen or not at the Rock, something like that, I think the Rock could carry that during the high months.
Okay.
It has a space for that.
Yeah, and I say this with tremendous respect for what's being done here because we do have our events out there, the ones that come to my mind, the surfing events, the kite and whatnot. And I would like to think that what you're talking about here is something that is along that
Yes.
feel, along that feel, and not something where we're going to take Morro Rock and turn it into a beer garden and turn it into something like that.
No, I think the idea is, we have so much population there at our high seasons, and we're not doing anything to upsize. There's no food, there's no liquor there. Whether we want that there or not, I think there's a big revenue ability there. I was hoping maybe the restaurant people want to put on some of that. I'm not sure, but...
Are you talking permanent, or are you talking just like on a weekend, like a single event?
I was thinking most of these would be something that we would roll out during the high season and test it out. How's that work? So, for example, if we know that we have these certain events, do we then want to provide infrastructure with food trucks, alcohol, those kinds of things that you see that, like if you go down to downtown Slow on Thursday, that feel?
Yeah, and I'm going to say this in terms of, I don't have a problem with, you know, the types of events that we have out there right now. The two that come to my mind are obviously the surfing events that take place and the kite festival that takes place out there.
Right.
My concern comes into, and this is just personally, and we're not the council. We're just making some brainstorming recommendations to the council, who are going to beat up with these issues. I'd personally be concerned over anything that would be a rollout type of thing and that would go beyond what we're already doing out there at Morro Rock. And that would be my concern over where this particular item is going. But I say that in terms of respectful.
No, I completely agree, Michael. I think it's where do we start? And when we talk about how do we implement, who's going to implement, I just think the simpler we have a first step, because we don't have to completely buy in. Let's roll it out a bit when we have all those people there, see how it goes.
Yeah, and obviously, these are recommendations to the city council for their discussion and the whole community's input on this.
Thank you. My comments are a little, probably more 10,000-foot level. I think that context for me is our day visitors are down by about 12% from pre-COVID levels. Our overnight visitors have recovered, but we have fewer day visitors now than we did pre-COVID, which worries me. Total visits are down by about 3%, and the study that Visit Morro Bay commissioned tells us that our overnight visitors bring in about $230 per day in taxable goods. And even a day visitor brings in about $100 a day in taxable transactions. So I see that what you're proposing here is kind of a hot start on a, maybe a longer-term day visitor promotion. I often think that we don't get our share of business from South County or North County, even though we're a better destination than anyplace else. So what are we doing where people aren't thinking of us first? Again, I see this as a first step, hot start to a broader day visitor promotion program, and commend you for it. And for some of this, it's going to be a little bit of a ready-fire aim. Let's try it. Let's see if it works. But let's not be afraid of trying something new because something new is what's called for here, in my opinion. With that, are there any desired changes to the proposals that Brian and Jean would come up with?
I had one added. When Jean brought up the idea of the outreach to the regional restaurants, I didn't think of it. I thought it was somewhat fascinating. And since then, I've had people from San Diego come and talk to me. And that seems to be a very strong trend that is, has a high probability of sustaining its business. When you have, strangely enough, if you have a successful restaurant in Slow and you bring it into Morro Bay, there's a very good chance it's going to be extremely successful. It doesn't even matter if it's two to five miles away. In North County, they'll have three restaurants seven miles away from each other. The restaurants are successful, the business people are successful. Why don't we want to get into some of those relationships? It's really bigger than what I thought.
Any revisions that are desired, or should we move this one along as is?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a revision or not. I'm just looking back at some of the comments that we received. And I think one of them was around, I'm thinking about Cal Poly, and expanding that from students but also to staff and parents too. And so I was just looking in the strategies. You know, we have the senior year projects, we have WOW Week, but even thinking about homecoming, or Parents Weekend, or, you know, other like staff, I don't know, other staff events too. I think, I don't know if that's encompassed, you know, in this language already, but I think it's something that we can think about beyond orientation. And then, yeah, Michael, I don't know if this was kind of what you were thinking too around the vibe and seeing at Moro Rock, but I do think that our local tribes and Indigenous leadership should be involved in these conversations for any kind of development in that way because Moro Rock is a sacred site. And so I would just ask that maybe that's included somehow.
Yeah, your observation on that is really appreciated for a lot of different reasons. But I think that's where I would hope that, in this particular item, that the message that we send to the city council and to the rest of the community for review is to make sure that we don't just take this on, hey, we have an empty parking lot out there, let's put a beer and wine garden, music and entertainment. There's a lot of complexities to Moro Rock, especially, as Member Love pointed out, socially and culturally with the local tribes out here, the Salinas and the Chumash cultures and whatnot that are out here. It's an important place. So I just want to make sure that as this community has these discussions and moves forward, and to the city council, that it's recognized that this isn't just some parking lot for a lot of people. And it's an important aspect of moving forward with something like that and to really have community involvement in the discussion of whatever happens out there at Moro Rock. I think is going to be, would help in what we transmit to the city council if that type of language could be included.
So if I can suggest a couple things as the revisions, let's make sure that we have a, you know, tasteful quality events. That's what you're proposing anyway. But isn't simply, you know, let's get some K-Rail and circle the wagons and sell some beer. And that we respect the Indigenous tribes' interest in that area, and those be consulted. That cover it for you?
I think so. Because I know in this community, there's a tremendous amount of respect for just all those aspects. I think there's a real concern in this community, and probably amongst everybody up here. What we don't want to do to Moro Rock is ruin it. You know, and far beyond Indigenous issues and everything else. It's, Moro Rock is extremely important to everybody here for obvious reasons. So, yeah, I think you're on par.
Those two okay with you, revisions?
Just, this point has a lot of sub-points or sub-strategies to it. So I would inevitably see there being, it being limited. Okay, just from, anyway, just, I saw there was an example in Salinas where they'd started this concept, and it was successful way beyond their expectations. So I just threw it in the pot.
And I guess I'll reiterate for all those up here and in the audience is that we would expect this requires a staff commitment, some money behind it, and some organization behind it that we don't have right now. So those are things we need to anticipate and just can't, you know, keep wringing our hands saying, what if, what if, what if? Let's move on to correcting the downtrend that we're seeing, capturing the local potential, so.
But I like that point, which is, if we could, if we could look at the simpler solutions instead of the more complex ones, then that would be our best starting place because we need to start somewhere. So I would love to do things that have less controversy. If we're talking back and forth about the beer garden, let's just throw that one out. There's a whole bunch of other things. What are the things that we're not going back and forth, scratching our head, wondering how it's going to work? I mean, we've got 80 things here. If we get to five of them, we'd be great.
Yep.
So I appreciate that point.
Ready to move on to paid parking?
Let me start with paid parking.
Go ahead.
Listen, I imagine, for me, it's very controversial. And currently, the value of this is that it brings us to these conversations that we've all been wanting to have. And now we're having them with private citizens, with people in council, and the whole litany of it. Working backwards, where we are currently with the Rock, I don't know who's thinking about the base coat and who's thinking about the long-term grading and how they're doing it, but that approach seems to be, to me, a little haphazard. We're not here to cover it today. But one of my biggest concerns about paid parking at the Rock is paid parking at the Rock leaves paving the Rock. And that's not something, and I know we don't necessarily agree on all that, but my concern is, so if we go back to the basic idea, we have all these customers coming in at the parking lot, how do we get them to pay for, how do we get them to pay for parking? So there's many different ways we see with this and that. Generally, from a marketing point of view, it's called the point of purchase, a POP. Where do, how do we want them to experience paying for parking at the Rock? Well, it's already been proven, I mean, the Apple Store method would be what I would recommend. Is it practical? Maybe, maybe not. But the idea is, when people come park at the lot, if we have to spend all our revenue to fix the lot up so they'll park there, it's sort of backwards. People are showing up. I think potentially, we can find a way to access, you know, access their money for parking that doesn't involve the parking lot, getting involved with a bunch of businesses, whatnot. So if we can get money from the parking lot, I think it's a great idea.
I don't mean to interrupt you, I apologize.
Sure, I'm done.
You said the Apple Store method, could you qualify that comment? I was confused on that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, on contact, you show up, you pick up the computer, you pick up your iPad. Should we advertise for Apple? You know I work for them, right, Michael, so?
Yeah, you walk in there and it comes up on your phone. Right, okay, I see what you're getting at, okay.
It's personal, you're coming to Moro Bay, someone's connecting to you, how's your day going, is it practical or not? And so there's, to me, it's the two extremes. One is pave the parking lot, get the great machines, get all the white lines, have the gate, people come through. And the other is, hey, people park, and it's like an event. You get the money from them.
Comments, Sarah?
I do get stuck first. Yeah, I mean, this is totally just my, I guess, opinion. And I have not done the research on paid parking like Jean and Brian have. I think if we're talking about increasing day visitors being a huge goal, paid parking, to me, does not say we want more day visitors. I just use, we use Slow as an example all the time. Downtown Slow's paid parking, but I will avoid parking in downtown Slow if I can because I know it's going to cost me at least $8, an additional $8. So I, yeah, this isn't something that I, I suppose, would recommend.
Can I clarify what we had in mind in terms of our paid parking proposal? That it be very targeted, that it be very limited to the Rock, and that it also be limited in terms of time of year, that it not be permanent. And then, most importantly, that it be reasonable. For examples, something like a very low-cost annual pass for locals, thinking not more than $3 or $4 for kind of a pay period. And then, again, if you're just at the Rock, that's only a subset of our visitors, the ones that are going to the beach, whereas the vast majority are going to the restaurants and retail shops. So I would see that being kind of what, like what they do in Avala. They have a big self, kind of automatic gate lot. But they also have all sorts of parking in the town that's free.
Want to jump in next, or will you take it? Go ahead.
Okay, real quick on this. When we get a few pages into this, with the estimated paid revenue gains, what I'm seeing here, the assumptions are based on a previous parking study, estimated $300,000. Now, I have a previous parking study on my computer hard drive that I went through, and I think it was a Wilson study or something like that, three or four years ago.
Walker.
Thank you, Walker Wilson. How do you know that? How do you know that? How do you know that? You're just showing off today. Like I said, the Walker Study, thank you. I went through it, and maybe I'm missing something, but I didn't see the $300,000 estimate down there for Moro Rock. I'm sure it was in there or somewhere. But also with this additional revenue comes anticipating that 25%, oh, no, excuse me, that local passes will be sold at $30 a year to the local population, and it should penetrate 20% of our population. Is that 20% of households, 20% of the total population?
Yeah, it is.
20% of?
20% of the 10,000 amount. And by the way, just to clarify...
So are you talking about when somebody, if I buy a pass to be out there, that it's for my car or for the whole house?
Yes, yeah, well, for the car.
Okay, so that, and that's the point, is that, you know, 20% of 10,000 people is 2,000 people, but that's far different than buying a pass for a car as opposed to individuals.
True, true. This was a very top-of-the-waves estimate.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and this idea of, you know, taking something, a natural resource, and then having people come in and say, now you need to buy a pass to get out there, even though you live here locally, that just, it's like I said, I really do appreciate the time that's going with this, but I'm not convinced personally this is a direction we should be going with, in order to raise revenue that supposedly we're going to use for that area out there, which is, you know, to clean up the bathrooms and whatnot. I would think there's better ways to do it than something like this.
Sure, well, that's what this is all about. These are straw men. You know, this is just throw it out and see what sticks.
Michael, that, and that covered, where that idea, like, how do we, how do we, how can we utilize a parking lot?
Sure, sure.
So we don't have to charge people. I'm all for free parking. I think from a marketing point of view, it's brilliant. However, after talking to some people, they're like, how are we going to pay for the bathrooms at the parking lot that we can't keep clean? So the idea was, well, we could charge a couple dollars here and there. And again, on the top of it, I'm opposed to it in terms of a brand. I said pretty clear quite a few months ago that that doesn't fit our brand, the paid parking. However, if we want revenue for that area specifically, can we do it in a way that has that local feel? So people aren't feeling the pain because something's going to have to happen there, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, see, and I look at it as a, let's say hypothetically, it's $300,000 a year that we're looking at right now. I think there's better ways to do this through budgets or something like that, but to create a parking system out there to create the ability to, you know, put together $300,000 a year, or whatever it comes out to be, in order to maintain that area out there. I think there's better ways to do it besides paid parking, putting budgets, you know, and whatnot. But, you know, but it's a discussion we have to have. I mean, it's, yeah, it's worth having.
I think an important point is that that area, I mean, it's so beautiful, but it really is subpar as far as whether local or overnight visitor serving. The, you know, Steve mentioned all the things, just the fact that a lot of people can't access the beach. You know, it's super rocky and hard to get down there, and the walkways aren't good, and the signage isn't good, and the bathrooms are not well-maintained as they could be. And just, it could really be just a jewel, and it's sort of not.
It could, see, and that's why I see this kind of a cart before the horse. If the goal here is to generate $300,000 a year, I think the first thing we need to do is say, okay, let's say the target on the wall is, let's repair the bathrooms. Let's, you know, make that a little better, or let's, you know, repair the walkways, or all those other issues, which I agree with. I think you'd be better off, that we'd be better off as a city to understand the costs associated with that before we put together a program that develops revenue where we're not even sure what the cost is of what we're trying to fix. I think the first thing we need to do, and it makes sense, is let's understand what the cost structure is of what we're trying to fix, and then say, okay, this is a million-dollar project, it's a $200,000 project. It's a, and here's the ongoing revenue we're going to need, $500,000 a year, $100,000 a year, whatever it is. Once we understand the cost structure of what we need to do down there and what our goals are, then take a look at, okay, here's what we need to do with, whether it be paid parking, whether it be, or any type of other revenue enhancements. So that's why, I mean, I'm looking at this as a cart before the horse at this point. We're generating revenue to pay for something we don't even know the cost of it at this point.
So my take on this is probably a little more strident is that I think if there was extra money to put in improving the parking and the facilities, we would have done it by now. The, we're short, we need additional revenue. If someone can identify additional revenues that would be restricted to maintain that area, which is our primary visitor destination, and quite frankly, sometimes it's a little bit of an embarrassment. The parking lot is rocky, it's difficult to traverse, don't know where there's actually parking space there. Getting down to the sand can be a challenge. So in my mind, you know, this isn't about, do we sort of keep free parking? In my research, there is one community south of San Francisco, coastal community, that doesn't have paid parking so they can maintain the quality of the asset that people are coming here for. I understand the question about, so how big is this issue? How much would it take to maintain it? But at some point, you're not going to commit to, you know, any improvements until you know you have revenue. And for my taste, I think one of the commentators said, well, let's just raise the TOT and dedicate that. Well, I know what happens to that, is in the short term, it goes to the parking lot. And then it goes to other things because those are general revenues. This creates a dedicated restricted fund so we can make sure that the water-watching area is safe and nice and that the parking lot is okay. And that we actually have some handicap access down to the beach, that the boardwalk is swept and cleaned every Friday for our visitors when they come in. So for me, this is a, if we don't have revenue, if you don't have a tenant in your building that's paying you revenue, you can't do anything. To me, this is, this is the cart, this is the horse that needs to go to pour the cart because we can spend lots of money with architects and engineers figuring out how pretty we want it, but until we tackle this, nothing's going to really get done. And in a world of diminishing revenue, this gets less and less priority.
There is a dirty little secret about the parking lot out there that usually don't find in staff reports or anywhere else, but you can hear it talked about amongst people who have to watch all the people who go out there, is one of the reasons why that the, we don't have a smoothed-over-paved area out there for that parking lot, especially if you're to smooth everything out, is because you're going to find at 2:00 in the morning, people are going to be going out there spinning donuts, driving like maniacs, and doing things that they probably shouldn't be doing. If you keep a that-as-is, there is a unwritten rule of why that is like that. That, it's like I said, you won't find in the staff reports, you won't find anywhere else, but you'll have people talking about it privately in this community and within this government itself. So, you know, before we start saying, hey, you know, I don't like the parking lot because when I go out there in my car, I got to drive real slow because it's like, like that. There's kind of a reason why, you know, that people do keep it like that. I, what I'm saying is, you know, you end up fixing something which sounds great on the surface, and then you create these problems that are happening at 2:00 in the morning out there with stupid kids and alcohol. Just as a heads up on that.
Yeah, Michael, I think, I hear what you're saying. I think that, it's, no, it's not. It's not about necessarily how do we clean up every time someone goes out there and ditches it out. I think that the parking lot, I don't know how often it's being taken care of now, right now. My point is, like, the last two times that I've seen a big overhaul, once there was a, just like someone said, oh, we have all this asphalt, let's throw that down, so they did that. The current rendition with the golf ball-sized rocks, it's not, you want to get out of your car, you want to walk to the beach, you don't want to walk on all these. I'm not sure the decision-making for that, and I don't think that has anything to do with cars spinning out. It's, I feel like if we're already taking care of the park... It's, I feel like if we're already taking care of the parking lot, there should be some feel for it, like, what do we want it to feel like when people get out? I hear you about it getting ditched up. I don't think it needs to get fixed up all the time either. I mean, I agree with it, if you don't take care of something, people will drive slower.
And I think another one of my points is that the customer experience is poor. I think Sarah spoke about maybe chasing people away, because maybe they have to pay-
More rock.
More rock. Currently have bathrooms that don't operate as well as they could, and they're looking at putting a lot of money into that, so you have a bathroom with porta-potties on the outside. I think we should buck up as a community and say, we need to spend some money on making sure that thing that draws people here, 700,000 people here every year, we ought to make sure we have a dedicated funding source to take care of it. And, you know, God bless staff, they have to cobble together money to, you know, lay out, to smooth it out for our events, but why don't we have a dedicated funding source so that we can take care of that? We can take care of it and improve it, because currently, it's in the state it's in, because we tend to just throw Band-Aids on it. So as much as I would like to support free parking, I just know that everybody else has found a way to make it work. When I go to another beach community, it...it's a nice parking lot. From a technology standpoint, you don't have to have a meter reader anymore, most of those things are electronic. You can have people buy annual passes. So it's pretty low-tech, and I think what Brian and Jean have come up with as far as a, kind of a peak-period focused, see how that works, maybe that gets expanded, maybe not, but I think from just a dollars and cents standpoint, if we don't identify an additional funding source, an underscore additional, it's going to be the same as it's been all along. So this may be one of those things where we need to take a straw vote and see.
Michael, was mentioned out of $1,000. At...
What, $2,000?
$2,000 parking. Oh, what? Hold me up.
On two.
There you go.
More than two, that's too much.
Well-
But they don't have any...do they still use dollar bills?
Anyway, let's...
Okay.
Are we at a point where there are a couple possible no votes on this, or how do you...
I think we go... I'll see.
I think...I appreciate all of the extra context. I think, looking at the language that's in here right now, it could make more sense to me if instead of saying year slash day, we just say year during certain high-volume times of the year, because that, to me, is more like, okay, holiday, you know, maybe July 4th, you know, just pilot something that's limited in scope. I don't know how you feel about that, Michael, but that's more palatable to me.
It'll be a straw vote. It'll be a straw vote. So what I want to understand is, are there revision to what's being proposed that kind of makes most everybody happy? And if not, if it's simply a yes or no, then move on to a straw vote, and then come back and vote on the whole package as revised.
I think we just take it.
Okay. So Sarah, you sound like you're okay with it on 4th of July and-
High volume.
Labor Day and that sort of thing. High peak events.
Times of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, not on a consistent...
Okay. Michael?
For me, it would be, for me, it'd be a no on paid parking. I don't want to get into further debate on it.
No, not this side.
Yeah.
I'm a yes.
I just want to say, before saying yes, that I was an original no, until I really explored the fact that our jewel in the crown of Moro Bay is dilapidated, so I think it's an important part of that. It shouldn't be affiliated, but in my mind, and I think Steve made a good argument for it, it is. Yes.
Yeah, I'm torn, and I feel like it's how it's done, so I'd just leave it at that.
We can say that there's caution on it, if done right. From your standpoint, based on what you and Jean have worked on, what's...is it, you're torn between it being free and we'll sort of figure it out later on, or the proposal just requires a little bit of...
Well, I guess if, I could certainly, I certainly like the idea of a pilot program. I'm a...I'll anything once, you know, like, I just, I think a pilot, given your and other council members' discussion about needing money for that bathroom, that would be, if we took in paid parking for eight or 12 months, or eight or 12 weeks out of the year, what could that represent? But like I said, in the big picture, I believe free parking is, oh, and I think, you know, Solana Beach is a great example of that, and I think, but I'd also be willing to do it.
Okay.
Bathroom, the bathroom's an issue.
So let's move that one on as a pass with the caution that, and I think this was a recommendation from Walker studies, that you do a pilot program, so if something doesn't work out, but the goal would be, I guess, from what we're talking about appears, to try and find some dedicated long-term source of funds to maintain and improve the facilities at the Rock.
Rock parking lot itself, something that is...parking lot, oh. I'm sure, again, it's about the upsell, you already have the people. Sorry about that. We've already had the events at the Rock, so it's just about how do we upsell when people are already there? And that could potentially cover what would need to be on the parking.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the next item, sale, lease, and development of city properties. Eugene, you want to cover that one?
Although, I do want to mention that this, I know a lot of work is already being done on this by Airlin, in terms of, he's already itemized the list of properties that are the top potential targets to do this. And so that, there does need to be additional work, I assume, on appraisals and all that. So, in fact, I'd love to hear if anyone from the city has any updates on where that is. And then people have mentioned in comments the issue of accelerating negotiations with the Cayucos CSD with regard to that incredibly prime piece of property, and the great potential that that would represent for the city. So I believe that there's some actions that have already occurred on that. It would be very interesting to get an update, if that's possible at this time. And then, one idea that I did put a fair amount of detail on, because much, and we have a representative of that property here today, well, maybe she's gone, but the 1700 Embarcadero Dunes, Moro Dunes property, it's a very large parcel, and it has, you know, it seems to be a very successful business, and apparently, one of the most trendy and fast-growing segments of tourism these days is upscale RV glamping resorts. And this is an ideal location for some enhancement of the facilities there, plus it'll be approvable by the Coastal Commission. And the revenue potential on that for both the operator as well as the city would be significantly increased from current, just because those places are getting, you know, $140 a night, have restaurants and all kinds of amenities. And that is a tremendous area by the dunes and the ocean and the Rock. So just put that there as a very specific target to be looking at, especially whether indep...oh, there we go. We were just talking about Moro Dunes. Whether that's looked at independently or in conjunction with the sewer plant property, because they are right next to each other, those, there needs to be some real proactive planning around that, because instead of being, they're just prime real estate, not just from Moro Bay, but, you know, in a global context, anybody seeing that sees the potential in that area. Then the Market Street, people have talked about that ad nauseam. Again, that's something that's on the table for the city to develop that RFQ and target, you know, potential buyers for that, and what the vision is that we might want to see for that, to be, again, proactive in that vision, and maybe target the RFQ to include the things that are most desired by the city. Yeah, that would be it.
The first, on this one, Michael? I'll throw in my two cents on this. I think this is a great opportunity. The city is fortunate to have a lot of prime-located property. The work that's being done in the wastewater treatment plant is, and the adjoining current RV park, that's, you can't ask for a better located piece of property. I would also say that we have some gaps in our lodging profile. You know, one of them is the higher-end campsite and meeting space, so that whatever we do, I wouldn't want us to kind of cannibalize on any of the other lodging facilities, so it's a, it's not a zero-sum game, and I think that's entirely possible. These are pieces that can be developed easily, meaning probably within three to five years, we can see the actual revenue in addition to the sale revenue from the property. We can also see the occupancy and the $230 a day in taxable sales that come from that, so this is a tremendous opportunity for the city, and it may be one of the real keys to lifting us out of the visitor malaise that we may have. Sarah, any comments? Michael, are you okay with this one?
Yeah. Yeah, my comment is that this is bigger than we have down here with the $10 million, and Moro Bay is maturing, the real estate's maturing, the inventory that you guys all have, it's like two monopoly boards or something. So the more you dig into this, the nicer you'll feel about kind of what you have to pull yourself out, I think. Property in different locations, because it's so unique with, you have the school thing, you have different areas, they have unique rules and regulations about how you can move, how you can use. You should have your plays, you should know how you want to use them, your asset base in this premise, and that started a lot of this whole conversation, is where do we get revenue, and that's how we went down this road.
Yep. It sounds like this one's squared away with everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item has to do with the reserve policies. This would involve reducing the city's general fund reserve from its current level of maximum 50%, 35% is the minimum, down to a more, I guess, average of about 25% for the, for the county, so I think, is there anything else you want to add to that, Jean?
This is kind of self-evident.
Michael?
Yeah, for reference, could staff remind us the dollar amount that we're at with our reserves right now? Instead of just percentage, do you have a...you don't have to throw anything at me. I know that look.
I'm thinking so hard. I believe the balance at the close of the prior fiscal year was 7.5 million?
Something like that, $700 million is where our reserve is at.
Below eight for certain.
Okay. So let me make sure I understand this, so if we were to do this, it would be a one-time? This is not an ongoing thing then? It would be a one-time bump the reserves down from seven and a half to four and a half million, or whatever the numbers are in that?
This represents taking it from where it is now, but down to 25%. For the general fund reserve, there are other reserves the city has.
Right.
They have capital reserves, they have vehicle reserves, they have lots of other reserves. This would simply be the general fund reserve would take it down to what I consider probably more typical level.
Typical for the rest of other county cities and whatnot.
And the other part of that, that I think we've talked about, is that do these monies get simply get used to backfill a negative operating, or do they get spent on kind of strategic one-time investments?
Yeah, because I think that was a big thing in this discussion, making sure people were hearing us talk about this, is that we're talking about, if we were to do this, or the city were to do this, this is a one-time lump of funds.
Yes.
That we're talking about. So, and that's what you're, I think you're getting at here, too, is that, you know, making sure that if we were to do this, or the city were to do this, that, you know, making sure it's just not backfilling something, but this is going to be done for very specific projects.
Right. The other piece that I'm persuaded by, I think we had a commentator a couple years ago talk about this, is that maybe bring in another $100 of revenue and expense to go with it, well, that, now you're having to put 40 cents of that in the bank-
Right.
-for your reserve. So the promotion efforts and all that probably gets tempered by the fact that we don't have as much disposable income. So the, from my standpoint, what you don't want to do is, you know, have that money and just have it as a fund that gets bled away probably over a 10-year period. We have needs, we have capital needs, we have strategic needs, and we have things that are, you know, are going to cost money that we're talking about today, that those be used to the greatest extent possible for revenue-producing items.
How long have we kept it at 45%? Because I know former council member Heller-
Three or four years.
Have we kept it at 45%?
19, 2019, 2020, is about right.
I can look up the exact date of that reserve policy really quickly, but to clarify, it's a minimum of 33%. I target a 50%. And that percent is of the most recently adopted expenditure budget, combined general fund and Q and E.
Okay. Minimum 33, goal was 50, right now we're at 45. Mike, in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess clarification on that point, we would be recommending that the minimum would no longer be 33%, it would be 25%. Okay.
Would we still be keeping a goal, such as right now the goal is at 50? Would we still want a goal on that? Right now it's 33 and 50, are we going down 25 with the goal at...
This recommendation would take the goal down to 25. It wouldn't be a minimum, it would be a goal of 25.
Okay, so what would the minimum be?
I don't think there'd be a minimum. Some cities do have minimums, like, like one city in the county has a 17% minimum.
Because I might understand, so we have a 33 minimum, 50% being the goal, is that, did I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, and I think that's where I'm going with this, is I'm trying to just make sure I understand, is, if we were to recommend something like this, are we setting 25% as the minimum, or is that the goal?
I think that's for discussion today.
Just ruined my day, aren't you? You just have to do that to me, don't you?
If I may add one more thing for your consideration, the thinking behind the percentages is the amount of time, right? It's the amount of time we can go without any new revenue coming in. So it's three, 33% is approximately four months, and 50% is approximately six months of a year.
I say this for a sake of discussion. I like how we're doing things right now in terms of, we have a minimum that we keep it at 33, in this case, 33 with a goal of 50. I would be okay with moving this down to a minimum of 25, and let's say, make the goal up to 40, but, and keep it with a range idea in mind for what we're doing here. Well, that would be, I think, that'd be something I would be comfortable with recommending to the council from our group for discussion, please. Everybody else is going to have their different ideas on this one.
Jean and Brian, any pro? Okay. Sarah?
So we would be asking for the minimum reserves level to be reduced to 25%.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm in support of that. I think, yeah, there's been discussion around needing to be strategic with where that money would go, and I would hope that some of that would go towards the revenue-generating projects that we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. No modified? What's that? What's that?
Lastly, I would just give you the update that the reserve policy was adopted in 2022.
What was the reserve policy before 2022? Stephen? No, I'm just wondering because.
I don't think I can find it.
Did I not wonder that? I don't care, no. I'm furious.
But I won't be, will not be able to answer that right now.
It helps me to work from a precedent and a reference, just because then, you know, but, but okay.
Do you consider the context of 2022 where we were two years into COVID, right? So I think it was a conservative approach at that time.
I think it was 25. I think it was on CFAC back then and I think it was 25, but. So moving on to item number five, which would be the EIFD and CFD. Jean, if you want, I can introduce that item.
Sure, and I'm hoping you will augment my knowledge on that. But there are a few projects, okay, this, this is a, it's a funding vehicle and it kind of depends on the future projected tax revenues, incremental tax revenues that would be created by a project. And as I understand, it can be done either through a bond or through a pay as you go. And, but it does require quite a bit of, quite a bit of staff work and a lot of public engagement and meetings. So that it's, you would need to have a probably fairly well-defined project to, to start development of this kind of vehicle. For example, the Morro Elementary project, which would be something that consists of quite a bit of, you know, housing and retail and other potential. And the key thing about it is that it has been implemented in several dozen locations around the state of California. So it is a viable, it's a viable model. I think you even mentioned it's actually been used in Slow and a couple of projects there. So I, I think the key thing is to that there be a very viable project around which this can be constituted.
So I'll start with my comments. I've been involved in a couple of these. CFDs are, they're community facilities districts and a situation where an additional tax is put on property to provide services or infrastructure that are needed for a specific development. I can imagine that, you know, within the, kind of that new development area, the waterfront, we could put a CFD on there to maintain streets and parking at the Rock and things like that. The important point is that it's an additional tax, but it's also there to, to fund services and facilities that can't be provided now, and that may be the case. An EIFD is like an old redevelopment tax increment piece. It basically takes the increase in property taxes and allocates a portion of those to a special fund for infrastructure. So if we have an issue of needing some money at the harbor and there'll be a substantial increase in property taxes, the city and the county and other special taxing districts other than the school districts would negotiate about how much they're going to give up in order to make the, those improvements happen. And the idea is that all those entities agree that without the infrastructure that's supported by this, the increase in property taxes would never happen. But there are some key properties, Jean mentioned one of them, which is Morro Elementary School, which now has a zero tax base, that will have a high, much higher tax base and you can then capture some of that. And then some of the properties certainly along the extended waterfront area from, you know, the Vistra property, the RV park, the wastewater treatment, treatment plant, all of those could benefit from that. Now, this is one where Jean's right, the devil is in the details, but probably 200 or 300 cities in California use CFDs. They've become, they've become very routine. And Jean is right, there are a couple or, more than a couple of them in San Luis Obispo. EIFDs a little less so, but it sounds like something from my standpoint that should be investigated and maybe has some benefit, especially along the waterfront for those undeveloped properties, so. Kara?
I'm just trying to wrap my mind around it. So would this involve, so would this, would this be like, would this involve an increase in property taxes?
In the case of the CFD, it would.
Yeah.
Yes. And it's normally something that's done at the point of development so that if there are services that are needed to support a development, then the city and the property owner developer decide to levy this. These don't work where it's simply a blanket across the board, I'm going to raise your taxes by 10%. They're usually used for providing services that are needed or infrastructure, and by using a CFD, the infrastructure can be financed at a much, much lower percentage rate, so. For that very specific area. For example, if we want to develop that area around the wastewater treatment plant and the Morro Dunes RV Park and Vistra, there's going to need to be some additional traffic improvements. Maybe a bridge, probably a bridge. Can you lay that off onto the Morro Dunes RV Park or to the wastewater treatment plant site? Probably not. One idea is, I'm only proposing this as an example, you could spread a, an additional tax across that that would provide a funding source that would pay for that, rather than telling the next person in the door, you need to build a $10 million bridge. Everybody's sort of sharing in that. It requires some thought, but I think the idea is that let's, let's sort of start discussing this in the mainstream. That's how big facility is being financed now.
Okay. Thank you, I'm just processing now.
It is, that was my understanding, it is like how they used to do the redevelopment agencies in these communities. The whole tax increment idea that they used to have on this. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, see, and for something like this, I think this is worth exploring. I think this is worth having a community discussion on this, the pros and cons of this, because emotionally what can happen on something like this is that people walk away with the bumper sticker, which is taxes, but not understanding the financing mechanism that we're talking about in order to make infrastructure happen that in the long run works for everybody as an investment into the community and unit with development projects that actually prefer doing it this way, because it does financially work for everybody. So, but I, I think this idea is very well worth exploring.
Is the idea that generally we get money either through increased revenue or increased taxes, is that kind of how it works, Stephen, with the city?
Well, in order to provide improvements and services, there's the very small percentage of the 1% property taxes that the city gets. They get TOT, they get Q and E money, and they get the 1% sales tax, but since Proposition 13, that, what do you get, Yvonne, 13 or 14% of the property tax, something around there? It's a small, very small. Yeah. It's a way of getting an additional, additional taxes that are needed to provide the services. Some organizations, some communities fund a lot of their police and fire services through this. Some fund their housing programs through it. So the question would be, so what do we want to fund through these mechanisms? I don't think we're recommending any specific ones, but it's an additional revenue source that is available when you, when you have developable properties. We have redevelopable properties, we don't have a lot of additional development.
So is it a 1% additional property tax to all the houses or all the property in Morro Bay? It's specific for that project? It's project oriented? Good, I'm with you there.
Okay. So typically.
Yeah, I'm with you, I got it. No, I, I'm good.
When you say it's project oriented, you were talking earlier about the wastewater treatment plant, for example. Are we talking, you know, properties in that, like geographic area or is that also up for debate? Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how this works.
You can do multiple properties that have a like need of all those properties have to have roads around them developed or an additional access road or a bridge or something like that, and they all kind of benefit from it. Then you can do an EIFD or CFD on that to pay for that. It wouldn't need to extend down the Embarcadero or across the freeway, and the idea would be is that you have that as a, an arrow in your quiver so that when that came about, it wasn't simply, well, we'd like you to develop, but we have no way of paying for the improvements that are needed for it. I think as we sort of look at that area that I was referring to in the waterfront master plan, we're going to find some of those. There's some improvements that would need to be done. It could be if we're versed to paid parking, you could actually put parking, parking at the Rock or improvement as, as one of the eligible expenses under that. But moving it on to the, I think the city simply says, so these, these are tools that we need to look at and we need to figure out where they, where each of them might apply. But it, it provides an additional revenue source, it's simply isn't dividing up the same pie a different way. Or expecting that the city's going to have money left over after they get their 13% of your property taxes to provide services and capital.
That, that makes more, makes more sense to me now. So thank you. Yeah, I think for me, I feel like this is something that the community, like I think Brian was saying earlier, would want more education and opportunity for discussion on. And so the language as it's written right now is that we recommend that there, that we establish an EIFD. To me, I feel like that should be amended to say that the city explores it. Yeah. Yeah.
Is it okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because we, it really does have to be around specific project or projects. So, yeah, that, that's probably a mistake to have said that, that word. So explore or consider. And then can, you know, provide the list of potential projects once, once, and there's various task force going on. There's the waterfront master plan, there's the negotiations with Kayukas, there's, you know, and, and once, and then the standalone effort on Morro Elementary, and maybe once the results of all those are known, then you, you can kind of include the list of them. In the case of the EIFD, they don't have to be together, they can all be part of a single EIFD. Not so the case with CFD.
Is ready to move on to the last one?
That is the last one, yeah.
Oh, oh.
We had the last one, which were the other items.
Oh, right, 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 yes, of course.
The, the gas, gas station.
Okay, so on the other items, because we want to keep it to five, had different conversations and whatnot, athletic tournament and events. At one point I was in the park and rec committee department and I was surprised at how much money can come into Morro Bay from, from the athletics and the fields and the tournaments, and especially in the summer, we're the place to be for these softball leagues and the whole subculture. So that was something that we had thrown in there in terms of what that would represent. And then the other thing, so the other thing stood out when we looked is the, the gas stations for TOT are something like in the 25, 30, something percent. So I thought, well, if we're getting all that revenue from the gas stations, what can we do for them? I'm really believe in this business through partnership and relationship. And so we thought that we could do very simple buy local, which I'm starting to do myself. I drive north once a week and I'd go to some gas stations for that, but now I have a reason to go to Morro Bay Gas Station because it's increasing our revenue. So it was a simple concept that represents a tremendous amount of revenue. So I just worked backwards, where's the money? How do we take care of the gas stations? Put it out to, just this conversation, I'm sure we're going to now think about, hey, I, let me buy my gas in Morro Bay, I don't need to go to that gas station in Slow, that's got all the cool signs or whatever. Get very, get very attached to which gas stations we go to, we tend to go to the same ones. How do we help the residents in Morro Bay understand the value of our gas stations? And after that, they should go to Albertson's, the other place that gives us all our TOT. You know, we're so caught up in this, I'm sorry to say, but we're caught up in, in the, there's some more interesting businesses and Albertson's and the gas station, and yet I don't know who's so much on our TOT as a group. So we should show them some love, that's, that's just my thinking. That was it on our extras, hunting? Light out.
Question, Sarah? Michael? I think my comments on those items are that Brian's right, the, our gas sales made up 23% of our taxable sales. And that amount was actually greater than the total retail sales on the Embarcadero. That little intersection of Quinton or Morro Bay Boulevard is just a goldmine for us. So I appreciate the way Brian puts show and the love and maybe, does that amount go down with EVs? I don't know, but it's a, it's a cornerstone of our piece. Also the holistic approach to facility pricing, I think you mentioned that before, we need to take a look at that, so we're not looking at the individual revenue line items, we're looking at the top line of what we're getting. And then the, the other recommendation, so. Everybody okay with those items, I assume? So what I had as far as the formal motion was that on marking to Cal Poly students, there was some discussion of events at the Rock, we want to make sure that those were tasteful, quality, sensitive to indigenous values, unpaid parking, there was some caution on that, perhaps a pilot program to start out with, I think we were able to agree on that. Concurrent on the sale and lease and development of the city property, reserve policy for 25 to 40, 40%, exploring EIFD and CFD, and then support for the other items, including the athletic tournaments, buy local gas, and holistic pricing. That sound like it? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the items as amended?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Member Love?
Yes.
Member Dorfman?
Yes.
Chair Peck?
Yes.
Vice Chair Woody?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. The last item is the discussion of the transmittal report. I sent out a report Friday or Monday, which attempted to basically provide all the information we've collected over the last year or so. And so if there are any revisions to that, what I'll say is that the, that report will be revised to be consistent with this CFAC motion that we just had. I'll work with Emily to make sure we're getting some consistency on that, but if there are any revisions to the transmittal report, please let me know, otherwise that also requires your approval, consent and approval. Motion, we need a motion to approve.
I'll move so to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Member Woody?
Yes.
Member Love?
Yes.
Chair Peck?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Dorfman?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, everybody. And I think we have a few minutes left. Emily, can you give us, can you give us an update on the budget and where we are in that?
The revised proposed budget for '25-'26 will return to City Council on Tuesday, June 24th, and the agenda should go out, I believe, tomorrow, since Thursday is now a holiday. And I will be returning to the office to finish my work on that.
Okay.
Is there anything else this body wanted to know? Thank you all very much for your work on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.